Good morning. Welcome to the Sunday, February 28th, 2021, School Committee Meeting. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Good morning. Mike Moran.
Good morning. Mark Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Brian McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Guastucci.
Anthony Ternaral.
Jeff Boe.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the January 26th, 2021 Executive Session Minutes, the February 23rd, 2021 School Committee Meeting Minutes, February 23rd, 2021 Capital Asset Subcommittee Minutes. The Executive Session Minutes not to be released at this time.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries six, zero, zero. Visitors, comments, and questions. I see none. New business. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll jump right into the reopening update and academic calendar presentation. So I would like to spend a little bit of time on this slide briefly. You know, this has been one of our foundational slides since the beginning of the school year, and I want to update the committee that we did have the opportunity, I did have the opportunity to have a staff meeting at each school on Friday with all Unit A members, Unit D members, as well as admin assistants. And we really talked about this slide. And we talked about this slide and kind of reiterated the fact that this is one of our foundational slides. And this absolutely 100% should be our goal, to get kids back to in-person learning as soon as possible, as safely as possible. And I think it's important that the community knows that when we developed our reopening plan back in August, we developed a plan that would allow us to quickly and efficiently move between any of the three models. Honestly, at that time, we thought we'd be going to remote learning at some point, right? That was our August thinking. But we're fortunate that the plan and the structures we put in place allow us to move pretty quickly between any of those learning models. So I reminded that to the staff the other day on Friday, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them again for their efforts and to let the community know that we're ready to go on this. We're absolutely prepared for this and ready to go on this. So we'll go to the next slide. None of the, keep going, please. None of these COVID statistics have changed. Keep going. We'll go here. So we go back to that thinking in August, and we had our task force and our leadership meetings and reopening committees. Again, we had nine committees with 43 different community members. We had multiple meetings. And the three primary obstacles at that time were transportation, transmission within the community, uncertainty really around that, and teachers. So transportation, game changer on February 11th, when we got the new advisory from DESI. Transportation, excuse me, transmission. We know six months of data have shown zero cases of in-school transmission, one mitigation strategy is a follow-to-fidelity. And teachers, SRT2 grant, we've made everyone aware of that. The SRT2 grant, actually, the application opened last Friday, and that's another additional $200,000 for Tinsborough Public Schools. The SRT2 grant is specific to reopening schools. That allowed us to hire remote teachers, grades K to four, as well as two additional seventh-grade teachers. It allows us to thin out the classes so that we can move into this model. It's important to note, those positions that we've hired are third trimester positions. Those positions end at the close of school on June 15th. Those will not be carried into our FY '22 budget. I just want to put that out there for the community. We're not increasing our footprint next year. This is for this year for reopening. So it is able us to thin out some classes so we can get to six by four and bring kids back.
Just a comment real quick. There's no sound on the live stream. Someone just alerted me. So just in case the person running the booth or whatever.
Okay, thank you. So Jamie, if you can look at that, the sound issue on the live stream. So, Mr. Chair, do you want to keep going? Do you want to recess for five minutes to address it?
Yeah, I'll seek a motion to take a five-minute recess to address the audio issues.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries seven, zero, zero. We'll take a five-minute recess. Sorry about that. Someone alerted me. I'll seek a motion to resume the School Committee meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries seven, zero, zero. We have resumed the meeting. Dr. Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the purpose of today's meeting really is to talk about the THS/TMS reopening update and to see where we were. Go to the next slide. As we left our last meeting earlier this week, just Tuesday, you know, we talked about four different things, four different considerations that we need to kind of understand a little bit more. We need to understand what the parent choice was regarding our learning model, THS and TMS. Please to report that at Tinsborough High School, we had 98.2% of our parents respond. And at Tinsborough Middle School, we had 99.2% of our parents respond. At the last meeting on Tuesday, we talked about the potential 20 students moving off of one seventh-grade team onto another team. Mr. Paul and his team worked very hard over the past three days, and they were able to get that number to 14 students. So only 14 students will have to move from one team to another team. Mr. Paul will work with the teachers to determine who those students will be, and we'll go from there. Additionally, at the middle school, Mr. Paul needed to make sure that current classes could fit in current classrooms. So after doing a little bit of jostling, very little bit of jostling, we had to move one student in one Grade Six class and one student in one Grade Eight class to make the numbers fit in the rooms. I will remind the committee that traditionally, every trimester, kids are moved for other reasons as well, non-physical space issues. But in terms of physical space issues, we only had to move two kids, one in sixth grade, one in eighth grade. We will continue to work with TTA, the TTA leadership throughout this process, and we will continue to finalize plans. But as of today, we are in very good shape at TMS. I'm also happy to say that Tinsborough High School, because it's a trimester-based school, we didn't have to really adjust any classes at all. So we're in good shape at THS as well. So we'll go to the next slide. So in terms of THS learning model question, you know, let's go a little bit deeper into that. We have 433 students at Tinsborough High School. We had 98.2% response rate. Of that response, of those responses, 83%, or 369 students, opted for in-person learning. 66 students, or 15%, opted for remote. And you can see the number of transitioned students. 14 students went from in-person to remote. 40 came from remote to in-person. A net gain of 26 students in-person. Go to the next slide. TMS, similarly, 394 students, 99.2% response. We had 391 responses. 88% of those students selected in-person learning, or 346%. We had 45 students opt for remote, or 11%. Four students went from in-person out to remote, and 39 students went from remote to in-person, or a net gain of 35. And those other numbers are the ones I spoke to in the last slide. So all in all, tremendous, tremendous response from the parents. Thank you very much for working with us and getting back to us. We had a lot of questions about models and how we could address that. Mr. Ogden, Mr. Paul personally reached out to every one of those parents who had a question. So that being said, we're very confident with where we are and where we can go. Let's go to the next slide. One of the things that, you know, I want to say and just remind the community, in order for this to work, we need to work together. We need to abide by the CDC and DESI strategies regarding wellness. If your child is symptomatic, and this is on our webpage, and Michelle Riley keeps banging the drum on this, and we appreciate it for that, we need you to follow the guidance if your child is symptomatic. This is a fragile learning model that we want to protect. We want to keep our students safe. We want to keep our staff safe, and we want to keep this learning model intact as we move forward. So we'll go to the next slide. So the modified reopening proposal that we've talked about since November. March 1st, tomorrow, kindergarten, grade one and grade two come in five days a week. Remote learners will be assigned to a remote teacher in grades K1 and 2, for tomorrow. They've already transitioned. They've already met their teachers. We're ready to go. March 15th, grades 3 through 12 will come back five days a week in person in six-by-four foot classrooms. Grades 3 and 4 will also have a remote teacher, and they will transition with those teachers over the next two weeks so they can hit the ground running on March 15th. That is the revised reopening proposal. Go to the next slide, Mark. This is the language that's in your backup. This is the language for motion, and this is reflective of moving and living within our reopening plan that we developed in August. Mr. Chair, that's all the information I have for you. We have Mr. Paul and Mr. Ogden here to answer specific questions. Go to the next slide. Regarding the THS/TMS, we can go back and revisit any of the numbers. If you have questions about operations at the middle school or high school, the two experts are right here. And we're happy to answer any questions any community member may have at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. At our last meeting, this past Tuesday, we talked about three different options for getting TMS and THS back. One was an 80% return. One was, I think, moving grade eight to the high school. The other was, you know, 100% in each building. So what you're proposing today is 100% back in each building because there's very minimal impact as far as moving kids around.
Correct. We got to go 100% of each building. I think the biggest game changer for us at the middle school was realizing that the science labs tables, we could actually move, and they weren't necessarily connected to water, power, and electrical through the floor. So being able to move those science lab tables out and have bigger spaces that we could balance the classes. Additionally, by bringing on two additional seventh-grade teachers and thinning out the seventh-grade team to two equal teams of four, it made it possible to keep all the kids at the middle school. Okay?
Any questions?
I have a few questions. Can you just speak to the process if an in-person student needs to isolate for a period of time? Is that still available for them?
Yes, absolutely. If they need to isolate, quarantine, it'll still be the concurrent model that's going to happen right now. Essentially, it's what's happening right now. It's going to continue to happen anyways. We have kids that have selected the remote option at the middle school and high school. So the teachers are still going to be teaching concurrently. So if a student has to isolate or quarantine, it's no different.
And the remote option, will that continue to be available through the end of the current school year?
Absolutely, absolutely. We've created schedules, assuming every student is coming back, as well as some of our kids who went to other homeschool or out of district are coming back. So at any point, a parent can notify us that they want their child to come back, and they don't have to wait for a specific date. It's much different at the elementary school. We're balancing classes, and we have remote teachers. But here, and they have to dedicate a remote teacher at the elementary school, so it's a little bit different. But here, you know, we just say, you know, please don't send us an email on Wednesday thinking you're going to start on Thursday. It might be Monday. But within a reasonable time period, short time period, we'll get the kids right back in the class.
Great. That's all I'm saying.
Going out or coming in, either way, whatever parent wants.
Thank you.
So with 88% of students electing full in-person at the middle school and 83% at the high school, can our bus capacity still maintain that?
Yes. Yes. Given the new guidance by DESI in terms of the ridership recommendations, yes. I think you're hearing more and more about ventilation. It's about ventilation, ventilation. Windows are open. We're in good shape.
I just have a question regarding those science tables. This is just more of my curiosity. Moving the science tables out, is that affecting the curriculum and what the students are learning? Are they able to still use those at a certain designated time, kind of like a lab time or something?
Yeah, so they really weren't what you're envisioning, like where we grew up with science tables, with the gas and the water and everything piped through them. They literally were big island stations.
Okay.
And so they didn't function the way we grew up. So yeah, the curriculums aren't impacted.
Oh, I just wanted to ask that question. Good.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Mike, thank you for bringing that up. Actually, I just checked one off for me. Can we talk a little bit about how lunches, mask breaks, things like that are going to work within the buildings? And then also, as far as TMS is concerned, I know obviously there was a lot of work put in earlier in the year to make sure the windows could be open and what have you. And we're also starting to get into nicer weather outside next Tuesday. Can we talk a little bit about how that's going to work as well?
Sure. If you don't mind, I'll defer to the two principles. So, Mr. Paul, why don't you come up first?
Good morning. Lunches, let's start with lunches. Lunches were one of our bigger concerns. We talked about different spaces. So if you build an auditorium that holds around 44 people, 44 kids using the up top and putting desks down below, we've expanded that to be around holding 50 to 55 students. And then what we've done and we're endeavoring to do is bring in tablet desks to put into the cafeteria, which will allow for 66 or so students there. Those two combined spaces handle our sixth and eighth grade. Doesn't handle our seventh grade. But we built the schedule such that we can have lunch in the gymnasium when there's no classes going on. We'll have tape on the floors that kids can sit. Once the weather's good and Dominic Santat is getting the tent put back up on the 15th, actually, or around that timeframe, we'll be outside. So I envision the lunchroom being kind of moveable split kids to get outside. So that's that. Mask breaks in the room are going to be difficult, but the good news with sixth grade in particular is they all have to be within close proximity. You have doors to get outside. And so they're going to create a schedule that staggers five to 10-minute mask breaks to go outside. When we're six by four, it's a little more concerning when you have 20 kids or 19 kids in a classroom. Also, seventh and eighth grade have been doing outside mask breaks. We're not going to get to the point where they're all going out at the same time. We're going to stagger that because kids being kids in the middle school, they're going to want to gravitate to each other, and they're going to have larger groups there. The other reason we're moving all those desks into the cafeteria is so that it's six by six in there, which is the guideline for eating. And that will allow for, we'll spread them out far enough that they can still eat safely, talk, you know, and not have any concerns there. Did I get, are all your questions answered? Oh, and then the window piece, obviously, short of Tuesday. If it's 40 upstairs, our rooms have been quite warm lately. And if we need to, we'll have fans blowing out so that we get some air. But Mr. Comptrails did a really wonderful job setting the different stages of the windows. And although if you're on this side of the building toward the central office, you get a normally breeze in there, which could be called. The other side of the building is, could be 10 to 15 degrees warmer. First floor has been pretty consistent, and we will open windows as soon as we can. But the central office did a great job getting us air purifiers. There were rooms with two and three air purifiers, and so I feel like we've got pretty good movement going now. The windows will just be another level of mitigation, so.
Jeff, do you want to speak to the high school?
Yeah. So at the high school, somewhat similar to what the middle school's doing. We will use the gym as our extra space for lunches. Back when we were planning over the summer before we had guidelines, we made sure not to schedule any classes in the gym during period four when lunch is taking place in case we had to use that space. So we can currently fit 50 kids in our regular caf, and then we're confident we'll be able to fit the rest in the gym with our subleeches. We put some tables out. Much like Mr. Paul had said, once it's nice out, every kid's going to go outside. We learned that this past fall. Kids never ate inside. The caf was empty. So I'm confident that will happen again. In regards to mask breaks, every class or every period of the day, teachers offer our mask break to kids. The vast majority of them take place outside due to the spacing that we have. And there are various teachers that want to take them, have them inside as well. So the weather plays a bigger factor with that. Some kids will choose not to take a break when the rest of the class goes out, and they'll still have that option as well. So they'll get one every period, so. Thank you.
Mr. Small?
Thank you. I've had conversations with many parents and staff members over the past few days. Most of them reached out to me. I reached out to several of them that I know. And I had a pretty good split between parents who were very excited to see more kids coming in more often. And I've had, and speaking to people who are also concerned about the aggressiveness of the, using their words, the aggressiveness of the schedule. But the main concern that I've heard from all of them, from both sides, was that... But the main concern that I've heard from all of them, from both sides, was that, the main concern is the health of the classroom. And I think we agree with that. That's all our, our, one of our biggest concerns with this, is making sure that the classrooms are healthy. And, and I appreciate all the, all the great things that you're doing to, to help with that. I think they're going to go a long way. And I'm, I'm very confident that the staff and administration will be able to do this successfully. But one concerning thing that I heard quite frequently was not enforcing, or not enforcing frequently enough, I should say. The use of masks on a regular basis when in the building, mostly with the kids, but sometimes staff members, were not wearing them when they should have been. I, obviously, I'm not in the building. I can't attest to this, so it's, but hearing it from many people, I'm, I'm sure it's, it happens occasionally. I, I would just request and even challenge our building principals to, to enforce that, the mask wearing, the proper types of masks too. Not just a gator, a thin layer of material over these, over their faces. And making sure that they're wearing it at all times. That, that could throw all of our plans out, out the window with. So I, I'm just asking to be able to address the concerns of the parents and staff members that I've heard from, that that is something that we continue to look, look into and continue to force.
So if I could just respond to that. Thank you for the feedback. We appreciate that. Masks are required at all times, particularly in class with students. I will say that the school committee has not adopted a policy that, that bans gators. So if the school committee would like to revisit that, the policy subcommittee would like to have that conversation. That's something that we could certainly discuss going forward. But I think, you know, I think globally, I think what, what you see in the school is zero cases of trans, in-school transmission since September. So I don't doubt that some of this is potentially valid, and we certainly do everything we can to make sure, mitigate, to make sure that we're addressing these issues. But I think that the gator conversation is a conversation for the policy subcommittee to have at some point.
So I just remind everybody that when we voted on our policy, we did that with the support of, of the Health Department. So the Tingsboro Health Department went in on that, and we went off of CDC guidelines. And it's not about gator as a term, it's about how thick materials are, and, and basically, our, our policy states that any style mask is appropriate at this point in time. We can certainly talk to the Board of Health again, but we had agreed as a board and as a subcommittee to not be the ones deciding on the materials, the textures, and the types. We, we went through our Board of Health for that. So just to remind everybody that that was our policy.
And I would just make, I guess as a final point, I appreciate all that, and I kind of what I, we had an administrative meeting the other day, and I had all the principals in, and I said, essentially, we're bringing more kids in. This is like another first day of school. So every one of our routines, every one of our, our traditions needs to be reestablished with kids. We need to set the tone again. Tomorrow, it's going to happen, K to one, two. On the fifteenth, it'll happen, three through twelve. We need to be vigilant. And again, it goes back to the slide I talked to earlier. We collectively, as a community, need to do everything we can to protect this fragile learning model. We need to keep this going right for our kids. So I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. And I think that, starting it over again like a first day, just helps to reinforce that, and I think that would be great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one of my concerns is drop off and pick up. We're going to have a lot more parents driving their children and picking them up, which I think is going to add a lot more traffic in all of our schools. Dropping off a middle school student on a regular day could be a chore here. Have we done anything, or are we looking at any different traffic patterns or anything at any of the locations to help minimize that?
So we did the best thing we could. We reached out to the Tingsboro Police Department, and they're going to help facilitate drop off and pick up over the next couple of days. We think drop off is going to be more of an issue than pick up. Pickups are a little bit more staggered. Parents get there earlier, particularly at the elementary school. So Mrs. Kavanaugh did a dry run the other day, and went through twice at the drop off, and it took her seven and a half minutes to go through twice. So we're confident that we can do it and do it well, but we will have the support of the Tingsboro Police Department minimally for the first week or two, to understand what it looks like. And if we need to revise patterns after that, we will.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any further questions? I will seek a motion to approve the modified in-person learning model as outlined in the TPS reopening plan. This model includes full in-person learning for students in all grades, with a remote option available to families. This model will begin for students in grades K one and two on Monday, March first, two thousand twenty-one, and will begin for students in grades three through twelve on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could just go forward one more piece of information. Our academic calendar. Given the shift to full in-person, this is a current revised academic calendar. It reflects that our last day of school will be an early release day on Tuesday, June fifteenth. As you recall, we were originally scheduled to get out on Friday, June eleventh, but we did have a February second snow day, and we did have a no-school day for students this past Friday to prepare for in-person learning. So we need to make those two days up, so they bump into the following week to get us to the hundred and seventy school days for students this year. Again, ten days at the beginning of the year for the, went for the union. So Tuesday, June fifteenth, will be our last school day, and just as a point of information, if you go to the next slide, Dr. Flanagan. So students who were in a cohort and in person, if you're thinking about the number of in-person days available, kids this school year. Students in K ten, K to two would have been in school, a hundred and ten out of a hundred and seventy days, or sixty-four percent of the time. And students in grades three to twelve, a hundred and four out of a hundred and seventy days, or sixty-one percent of the time in-person learning. So that being said, go to the next slide. I'm, I'm looking for support of this modified academic calendar, so I can get it up on our webpage tomorrow for families.
I'll seek a motion to approve the modified two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one academic calendar, as presented by Dr. Flanagan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero zero. School committee discussion. Mr. Mall?
I have nothing. Just thank you for all the hard work to principals. I know Ms. Kavanaugh's not here, but to her as well. And I, I think it's an exciting time. Just to reiterate, you know, it's day one again for school coming in. Take it seriously, students, and I think we're going to get through this, and I think it's going to be a good time for social, emotional, and mental wellness of children to be back in school and to have that interaction. So the isolation, I think, has been a negative impact to some portion of our community. So I'm excited and fully support this.
Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Just seconding really what, what Mike had just said. Thank you to all the principals, administration, TTA, physical plan, everybody that's been involved in trying to get us back to what's going to be, hopefully, a normal rest of the school year. It's been a ton of work. It's been a lot of effort that's had to be put in, in place, and best of luck to everybody.
I'll echo those comments. I will add our maintenance and custodial staff as well, who probably don't get the credit they deserve, in keeping our buildings clean and, and going every day. The TTA, the union, who's worked with us. Thank you to them, the teachers, and to our administration. Thank you.
I'll definitely second all the hard work everyone's put in. I can imagine how much work it has been, and it's been a lot. But I just do want to say one thing to parents of junior high and, or middle and high school students, that they go out this weekend and maybe get a coat for them. They don't like to wear coats, but they may need it if they're riding the bus or, or in the middle school, so. That's it.
I'll echo the same. Thanks to the administration and all the staff, but also thanks to the parents and the members of our community. It was our community that brought these numbers down and has allowed us to come to this point, so a big thank you to our entire community. Thanks to the parents for your patience and your support through this, through, you know, constructive feedback in both directions. I think those points are really important to hear so that we can do the best thing for our students.
Dominic Semantel, his maintenance crew has been phenomenal. He's done a great job. We really appreciate all their efforts. I appreciate the, the school committee allowing us to lean on science and data and stay down the middle. There's a lot of white noise out there that, that hasn't swayed us one way or the other. We're following and doing the best we can, given the information we have, and we know what the data says, and we're following that. So, so thank you for your support with that. We're going to watch it. We're going to watch it like a hawk, you know? And if we see a, a trend that we don't like, we're going to shut it down, and we're going to go back to hybrid and/or remote. So it's incumbent upon all of us to work together to ensure we can keep this learning model going for the rest of the school year. So thank you everyone for your support. I appreciate it.
I think one of the teachers, administration, Dr. Flanagan's central office, maintenance staff, or I think the parents for such an overwhelming response to the surveys. You, you don't see survey results like that anywhere else. So I mean, they're just amazing. It shows how, how much they care and how into this they are. I, I think it's important to state that this isn't, this isn't the final. Like, we, we didn't reach a goal, and now we can take a breath. You know, I think it's more important now to be extra vigilant, so we can maintain where we're at. We worked so hard to get here. Now is not the time to relax. We need to be extra cautious, so we can maintain this and, you know, hopefully next year come back even stronger.
With that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero zero. We are adjourned. Thank you.